Regular meeting of the Emory Unified School District Board of Trustees. Roll call, please, Ms. Tameri.
President Dice.
Present.
Member Dwin.
Here.
Member Affelt.
Here.
Member Kent.
Here.
Member Simon.
Here.
Great, thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening? Okay. So, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Sure, I'll move.
A second?
Second.
Awesome. Any objections? Any abstentions? Motion's carried. Now, we'll move on to Item D, Report Out from the January 8 regular Board Meeting. That must be a special, a closed session, correct? Yes.
The Board met in closed session on January 8 and discussed three items. One was significant exposure to litigation in one case. There were no actions taken. The second one was public employee discipline dismissal release. No actions were taken. And the third item was public employee appointment. And no actions were taken.
Thank you, Ms. Tameri. Now, on to Item E, Report Out from the Closed Session on January 15, 2014, Special Meeting.
So, in the January 15 closed session, there were three items discussed. The first item was litigation, exposure to litigation in one case, and the Board gave direction to staff. The second was public employee dismissal, discipline, release. No actions were taken. And the third item was public employee appointment. And no actions were taken.
Thank you. Only one slight amendment is to, um, direction to legal counsel.
I'm sorry.
Um, direction to legal counsel, that was.
On this, on this one?
On that one.
Okay.
Thank you. Now, we have an opportunity for members of the public to address the Board on topics not covered in this evening's agenda. Let's see. If you have any item, if a member of the public wished to address the Board, you can come up to the mic at this time.
Mic. It's not on.
I apologize for Bria not being here, but at the same time.
No, hold, hold on Brenda.
Mic's not on. Is the green light on?
Can y'all hear me? It's good?
Yeah.
So, I apologize for Bria not being here this evening, but at the same time, she's representing our school and she has a basketball game. But I wanted to relay a message about the ESS Annual Crab Feed. Okay, little flyers are all over the place. It talks about Saturday, February 15. It will be held at the Emoryville Senior Center. The address is 4321 Salem, right here in Emoryville. Tickets are $50. All proceeds benefit our ESS students, all the different clubs and the athletics. And we're just hoping that you will come out and support us. It will be warm garlic and butter crab, as well as Cajun crab and some plain crab as well. So, I hope to see everyone there. Tickets will be on sale from January 15 up until February 8. You can contact me, my name is Brenda Collins, at brenda@emoryusd, that's E-M-E-R-Y-U-S-D.org, or by phone, 510-224-8015.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Collins. Are there any other public comments at this time?
Yes. My name is Brian Donahue. And I have a child in the district, goes to the school, Annie Yates. And still, I look around and I, there's no Deborah Lindo here. She's not here. Where is she? The Board has not said anything to us parents or the citizens about the whereabouts of Deborah Lindo. Why isn't she here? Why have you, the question that I have to you is, why haven't you made an announcement? I understand there could be some legal problems by express giving too much information, perhaps, but that does not preclude you from at least making an announcement. Why haven't you done it? We deserve to know where our superintendent is. Year, two years ago, you told us that you want, we need to hire this woman because she's excellent, she'll be an excellent superintendent. Where is this excellent superintendent? So, I have here in my hand a copy of Ms. Lindo's Declaration in Support of the Plaintiff's Consolidated Opposition to State Defendants and Interveners' Motion for Summary Judgment and the Alternative Summary Adjudication in Los, in Superior Court of Los Angeles, where our superintendent has testified here in support of a, essentially what it is, is a union busting lawsuit forwarded by a Silicon Valley billionaire who doesn't like teachers' unions and wants to disempower teachers. And I met with Deborah Lindo when she first got the job, and I asked her, "Do you support teachers?" She said, "Oh, yes, I support teachers." "Do you support the teachers' union?" "Yes, I do," she's told me, very, very much so. And yet, here she is, offering testimony to, to, basically to bash teachers' unions and to tie, for instance, to tie teacher pay to student test scores, which is beyond the pale. Since Deborah Lindo is not here any longer, and she can't answer why she did this, why she wants to destroy the teachers' union, and why she wants to assign teacher pay to student test scores, I'm, the four of you, without, with the exception of Mr. Affelt, who wasn't here when he, when Ms. Lindo was hired, the four of you, I'm asking the four of you, okay, I guess maybe only three, the three of you who hired Ms. Lindo.
Your time is up, Mr. Donahue.
Thank you, thank you for that. The three of you that hired Ms. Lindo, so now, this is, this is your writing, this is you, you're talking to us, the, the parents and the citizens of Emoryville. This is you telling us that you want to tie teacher pay to student test scores. Since she's not here to answer, and you hired her, and you vetted this woman very, very well, and you took, you assured us all after the last superintendent, the one that faked his resume, you told us, "From now on, we're going to vet these superintendents extremely well." So, I have to assume that you know that this is who you were hiring. And so, this is, this is you, this is Mr. Simon speaking, and Mr. Dwin, and, and Ms. Dice, speaking to us. And, you know, this is a terrible way to run a district, and I think you should value teachers.
Your time is up, Mr. Donahue.
Thanks for that. So, I want to ask now also, in retrospect, maybe perhaps a year and a half ago, when the teachers collectively told you that they can't work with this woman, perhaps you should have listened to her, listened to them.
Your time is up. Can you please have a seat?
Thank you very much. Perhaps you should have listened to them. Bye-bye.
So, are, are you having, so I would, I would suspect that you have relayed the message that you wish to lay out this evening. Are there, I'm just going to open up to other public comment at this time?
Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
And so that we can.
If there is, I will, I will yield to anybody else who would like to speak.
That's fine, but as you know, this district, we do abide by a certain protocol as it relates to public, public comments.
Sure.
So, just to move the meeting along, if you have kind of finished where you are, we'll move on.
Well, if there's, anybody else who would like to have.
Well, I appreciate that you may have a direction in which you'd like to take it, but the, the way we run it here is that the Board determines how we run the meeting.
I understand.
So, really respectfully, do you have additional comments?
Yeah, sure.
On that? And you have already gone over your period of time, so I would have to offer that you could stay for other items that are maybe pertinent to that particular item, but.
I understand that's your opinion.
Your time is concluded at this point.
I understand. So, but if there's anybody else who would like to speak.
So, if there's other public comment at this time, well, well, that's great. That's not how we're going to work it, but I appreciate that. Or we can actually just clear out the meeting. I mean, we can absolutely do that, so we could do that as well. But thank you very much for providing your public comment.
All right.
Are there any other members of the public that have public comment at this time? All right. So, we're now going to move on to reports.
I think you should support the teachers.
I appreciate that. I agree. I absolutely agree. We're going to move on now to reports. I did have feedback from CSEA leadership that everything is going, going well and that they are moving forward in talks and negotiations with the district at this time. So, I was asked by Ms. Gracie to pass that message along, so I wanted to do that. She's working really hard, she and the team on, from the previous reception earlier this evening. Are there any reports from ETA?
Good evening. Good evening, President Dice, Board Members. I'm Dawn Turner, President of Emory Teachers Association. So, I have a couple of items and then a final comment for you guys. I attended an Alcosta President's Meeting a couple of weeks ago, and it was brought to my attention by a couple of the presidents that piloted the Smarter Balance testing, that they ran into two problems, two huge problems. One being bandwidth and their districts not being able to accommodate the testing. And the second really major problem was that students did not have the computer skills to perform well with the Smarter Base testing. So, I just want to bring that to everyone's attention and so that we can possibly be ahead of the game and get our students the computer skills that they need in order to perform well on these tests. I understand this year is just like a pilot year, but I'm hoping that I'm sounding the alarm early enough and that we get ahead of it. Okay? And then, I am moving that, I don't know if you were aware, Item I-2, which is our sunshine proposal. I would just like to read that in order to enter it into the record. All right. So, pursuant to Article 8, Section 3547 of the Education Employment Relations Act era, please consider this to be a formal opening of negotiations between Emory Teachers Association, ETA, and Emory Unified School District. ETA, like the district, has a commitment to student success, fiscal responsibility, long-term stability, and professionalism. In keeping with these principles, ETA is opening the following articles of collective bargaining agreement, excuse me, for negotiations. Article 6, Hours Workday. We would like to address the terms of the contract regarding work hours, traditional duties, and preparation time. And then, Article 19, Salary. We'd like to discuss enhancement of compensation that is more reflective of the present cost of living. And that is our sunshine proposal.
Thank you.
So, we're hoping to get started, possibly February or March.
Thank you.
Ms. Turner, can you keep the Board abreast on the first issue you mentioned about regarding the technology for students with the Smarter Balance testing?
I will.
Okay.
Okay. And then, one final comment, just in light of our present situation and what's going on in our district with the superintendent, just to acknowledge that, you know, it's been a rough couple of years. And we are at least appreciative that you guys are on the right track now, we're heading in the right direction, and hopefully, we can remedy some of these problems, move forward, get the right person in. We appreciate Mr. Quinn stepping up and filling the void until we get someone permanent. And, you know, ETA, as always, we're optimistic, you know, we weather the storms, but we, we need your support, and we're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we look forward to successful negotiations. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. So, we'll now move on to, on the reports. Do you have a comment on reports?
No, no reports.
We don't do it.
On the agenda is item.
I'm sure you'll have another item under Discussion Action Items. That was not an exchange between the two. So, we'll move on now to reports. That would be correct. So, we're now moving on to Annie HPTO, any members from that organization? Emory Secondary School, PTO, Student Reps Report, who's currently at a basketball game, Go Spartans. And we'll now move on to Superintendent's Report, Administrator's Report.
A couple of things. Regarding the yard supervision, District Administration met with regard to that issue, and we've determined that Annie Yates needs an additional noon duty supervisor. So, personnel item will be coming to the Board with regard to about a two-hour position during the lunch period at Annie Yates, with the increase in enrollment at that school site, and we figure they needed another body. That's one. We are finished with our 12, 13 negotiations with CSEA again. We have another TA with them. They'll be ratifying either later this week or early next week. We attended the School Services Workshop on Friday for the 1415 budget year. It's very promising. It appears that the state is going to be paying off the deferrals next year, along with approximately 10% increase for average districts throughout the state. It's about $751 per ADA to districts. I have left you at your seats a copy of the pocketbook handout on the 1415 budget in front of you. Administration also met with regard to PE position at Annie Yates. We discussed that that's going to be a item that will be discussed in the upcoming budget year for 1415, but right now, we decided it wasn't going to be a position that we were just going to put a Band-Aid on. We wanted to vet this out through the LCAP process and the budget development process moving into next year. Also, Annie Yates just completed installing a, well, actually, our technology department just finished installing a computer lab at Annie Yates. It's been up and running for about a week. The high school has 30 new computers and a cart, and we're looking to install new computer tables there. One more thing. The CFW Foundation has designated David Villa Lobos from ESS as a recipient of a $3,000. This says $3,000. Award, a scholarship award.
Oh, nice.
So, congratulations to David.
Great, great, great.
See, Mr. Burnett, I have a question regarding the Governor's budget for 1415. And when you say that he plans on paying off the deferrals, now, are those funds that are being set up in the LCFF formula? Or will we be getting, or does the state plan on paying those deferrals off in like a separate type of payment or apportionment? Will they all be rolled up in the, you know, or will they be all rolled up in LCFF? Do we know?
Basically, those deferrals were a loan.
Right.
And so, they won't be a reflection on the LCFF funds.
Okay.
It's strictly to pay off the state's wall of debt, so to speak.
Okay. So, is no money back to the schools?
It's no, it's no additional budget money in the budget year.
Okay.
What it does is give us cash.
Okay.
Payments for the dollars that we've earned during the fiscal year.
Got you, got you.
So, we won't be getting paid with a.
Less. We won't be getting paid less money and getting that made up in the subsequent year, quote unquote, because the subsequent, the, the payments in the subsequent year was actually the payments for the prior year.
That's correct.
And that won't be happening anymore.
There won't be an IOU for the current 1415 year.
I got you, folks. Okay, thank you.
All right. I don't have a Board President's Report, but I would report that the Board hopes to be able to verbalize decisions and things very soon, so please stay with us. And as, it's not as if the Board wishes to remain silent for the rest of our lives. That is not the goal at all, but it is to make sure that we are appropriately managing the comments that we can make and when we can. So, I do appreciate the comments offered earlier by both ETA as well as our public comment. I think, it's just to be clear, that that is not the, the decision of the Board. Sometimes, we are bound to follow a procedure and as is important to do. So, that's our goal here, is to be proper and right when we need to be at all times.
I would also add, there's, it's not accurate to say there's been no communication. There's a statement on our, on our district website.
True.
Is the extent of what we can say for the time being.
Thank you for that correction. We'll now move on to Consent Calendar. We have Items 1 through 5. Bless you. Are there any items Board Members wish to pull this evening?
I'd like to pull Number 5.
So, Item 5, 1 through 4, pretty straightforward. We have many meetings. Okay. So, maybe we can just go to Item 5, Overnight Field Trip Request?
Yeah. Just want to make sure we have all the documents that we need as far as parent permission slips, what will be the transportation getting in and out there? Okay, the van, oh, vans, yeah. Can you come up, please?
Hopefully, there'll be snow.
And then, how many kids, so Ms. Collins, how many kids are we taking on this trip?
So, we have 17 confirmed students attending the ski trip.
Okay. And we're taking vans from, are we taking our district vans?
So, we're taking two district vans. We're renting one van, and we're taking Mr. Wainard's vehicle, that I will be driving with another chaperone and the students' luggage.
I'm glad. So, how many chaperones do we have going?
So, we have five of us in total, which is way more than we need.
Five chaperones?
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
So, we also included, we have, we have four staff and a parent.
That's great.
What do you guys plan on doing up there? I'm just asking.
So, it might not be no snow.
Right, just talk about, you know.
So, that's the answer to my prayer.
Water sports.
Water, water sports.
Okay.
So, I'm going to chaperone to make sure they're cool. They were planning to ski and make angels and, you know, do snow stuff that I've been doing all my life, that I'm cool if it ain't no snow.
All right.
But, we're going to figure something out. Whether it's snow or no snow, we're going to make sure they have a really good time, a most memorable as well as educational time.
Okay, sounds good. That's it.
Snow is a question mark, right? Yeah.
Are there any other questions from any other Board Members?
I'm excited.
Sounds good. Good job.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments on Item 1 through 5 at this point? We can now if, have a motion to approve 1 through 5. Anybody? Oh, great. I'll second. Perhaps any objections to that? And we'll do a roll call vote. I think it'd be sufficient.
President Dice?
Yes.
Member Simon? Member Kent Ash? Member Affelt?
Yes.
Member Dwin?
Yes.
All right, great. So, we'll now move on to Discussion Items. This evening, we have I-1 ECCL Update Progress Report on Project Milestones, as well as Community Benefits, two, two speakers, I believe, this evening.
All the demolition is finished above slab level and up to the gymnasium and pool, which will remain. And so, I'm here to report on that, and, and I'll also give an update as soon as the slide comes up on all the various activities that we're tracking for project success and project completion. But before I do that, we have a really special treat tonight, okay? And one of the exciting things about ECCL is the community benefits that come, broader than just building a building. And tonight, we have a representative from our builder, Turner, Elena Anaya, and she is the Community Affairs Director for Turner. And the real star of the show tonight is Mr. Jabril Portlock. And Jabril, you probably know Jabril, but I met him for the first time earlier this, earlier, actually, last week, and was immediately impressed with him, like everyone is who meets Jabril, I'm sure. Jabril was an intern to Turner, learning the construction business in a paid position, doing real work on, on construction sites and in the office all summer, and then he's doing it part-time in the afternoons, two or three days a week, as he finishes his, his high school degree. So, that's my basic introduction. What I want the two of them to come up here, and from Turner's perspective, I want you to hear what it meant from Turner to have someone like Jabril working for them, and we will also want to hear from Jabril. So, I will step aside and let the real stars of the show tell you about this great community benefit.
I, I'm sure that you have read my letter, oops, my letter to the, in, in the packet, that pretty much outlined what Jabril did on, mostly on a daily basis. What I didn't put in there, because I didn't know how to articulate it, is that he is really, he really is a star. I can't tell you how, how grateful I am that if he says he's going to show up at 2:30, he's there at 2:25. You know, at 5 o'clock, Jabril has time to go home, you know? Okay, stop. You got to stop. You have to take lunch. You have to go. And, you know, it's, it's just been a super rewarding experience in that he understands. Critical thinking is really important in taking students to the next level, because that's really the, the gateway to college, you know, when, when you understand what, how, how everything works together. I'm a very small component of Turner. I'm Community Affairs, and, and sometimes I feel like I'm on the outside, you know, but I also work inside. Construction is so completely different from what I do. So, I've taken Jabril with me on a road of why Community Affairs is so important to Turner. Oakland Workforce Investment Board meetings, Youth Council meetings, taking him out to a job site, shown him how, what community means to a construction company, that it's just not going to events and passing out business cards, but actually making a difference in the principles and in the procedures that we enact on a policy level. And, you know, he's, we're going to this meeting, yep, 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 okay, let's go. All right. He went without, you know, without, I didn't really know this, they went on a rafting trip, which I would never go to, at American River, and he went with the, with the, with the group. And he has, we went on a bowling, we, we did bowling together, the whole opened in San Francisco office. He was right there, like he is part of the family. So, that, in itself, is hugely important to me and to everyone else, because there, then, there's no separation. He's not an intern. He's an employee. And that's how we view him, and that's how he views us. I'm, I'm pretty strict about my, my work ethic. If I say 2:30, I expect 2:30. If I give you a task and I explain the task in detail, I expect it to be done. If he tells me I'm going to do it in three days, I expect it to be done in three days, and he does it in three days, usually beforehand, which sometimes causes a problem, because then I say, like, okay, I have nothing to give you. But, you know, I, I snuff him off to other departments, and they're happy to have the help. So, I really can't say enough about Jabril. It's, you know how sometimes you say, wow, you know, you're doing so much, you're really changing that person's life? Actually, he's changing ours, because we get a very different viewpoint of what community is. I mean, we say, oh, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. I mean, we say, oh, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that. (sound of a machine running) Value to our group. And that's what Jabril has done. So that's, that's my strength.
Hi, my name's Jabril Portlock. I'm a community affairs intern at Turner Construction. I'm a 12th grader at Emery High as well. And working at Turner has just been an unbelievable experience. There's nothing, nothing else like it, nothing compared to having a regular job, working from nine to five on weekends and whatnot, flipping burgers or doing, you know, whatever. It's a totally different, totally different experience. And being able to wake up in the morning and go to school and then go to work, that's, that's something special. That's something a lot of people can say they've done before or do now. As a high schooler, I feel like my doors have been open left and right as I've been going down this path from summer to now. And working with Turner is, it's more than just, you know, I need this copied, I need this scanned, I need this faxed and whatnot. It's actually getting down to the nitty-gritty of, okay, we have this project, we need this part done, can you do it for us? And that's, that's been a real eye-opener. Because as a high school student, I was expecting to just go in, you know, copy this, you know, get my coffee, this, that, and the other, you know? But I'm, I'm happy where I am, and I can't, I wouldn't want to be anywhere else as a high school student now. I mean, working, working with Turner, starting from the summer, when I, when I first met Elena, my first day was on my birthday, and I was the best birthday gift I ever got, was the job. And being my first job, this is, is just amazing, from going to contract arbitration meetings and learning how much actual community involvement goes into construction, as far as having projects to where you have to have a 25% local business enterprise, a part of the project, and having, having another section from, you know, 50% of businesses from Oakland to Emeryville and San Leandro, having to come together and actually have to work on that project to meet a, not just a quota, but to meet an expectation of the city, to be able to, to meet a requirement for the city of Emeryville and Oakland and state of California, as, you know, as it goes on. And just knowing to be a part of that is just amazing, even though I may be a little, a little tiny factor, a little speck, you know, it's still, I'm, I'm happy being a speck, because I'm, I know I'm a part of something bigger than me, and I'm helping something bigger than myself. And this has just been the, the best experience of my life. And Turner, knowing, knowing that Turner is one of the largest construction companies in the world, the number one in event centers and arenas, is just a great, a great aspect on life. And the first day I walked in, I got my own personal Outlook email, and I was like, ooh. I was, I was really excited. I was, I was excited to get to work, and, you know, it's just, it was, it's more than what I expected, it's more than what I expected, and I'm happy it is. Because even when I finished stuff early for Elena, she sends me to accounting, she sends me to, you know, to project management, to, to all these different aspects. I've met so many great people working with Turner, I've made connections and whatnot for a lifetime, friends. The rafting trip I went on was, it was great, it was great. And working as a high school student is just a, a new look on life, because as we progress to college and move into adulthood and whatnot, we're gonna have to do that every day, every day. And I feel like this is just a little foot in the door, you know, to becoming an adult, and I'm, I'm happy I have my foot in that door, and I want to open it up with my hand. I'm, I'm excited, I'm excited, and I'm, I'm happy where I'm at.
All right.
Jabril, amazing. But just before you go, I must say that I know, I've known you since, like, a little thing. And, you know, to hear you articulate your experience the way you have done this evening is eye-opening and incredibly wonderful, and a testament to how successful your adventure has been, and how impactful our relationship with Turner has been for you. So I, I mean, well done, absolutely, both ways, and that's awesome. I mean, I, I'm stunned. Great job, and I'm gonna have to tell your dad. Great job.
I have a comment.
So I have a question first, Jabril. So since you had this great experience, do you plan on going into construction management or something to that nature?
I was just, we were.
Because I spoke to Elena about, about two months ago.
Okay, we were, we were just talking about this, and it's, it's so many different aspects that goes into construction. You can't just say, I wanna go out there and swing a hammer. It's so, so many things are going behind the scenes, so much, so many politics behind construction before you just go out and build the building. You have to go out and you have to talk to the community, you have to do all these different things that involve everybody, and that goes into building a building. It's, it's more of, it's not, it can't just be, okay, I have money, let's tear it down and build something new. It's more of, okay, let's execute a plan. It's, it's boom, boom, boom. It's, it's, it's just a lot, it's a lot that goes into it, it's a lot that goes into it.
You answered my question, though.
Um, construction, I can't say yes.
Okay.
Community affairs, possibly.
Elena, oh, you got a recruit. Okay, okay.
Possibly.
All right.
But I'm still undecided, it's still a lot, a lot of stuff out there.
Well, that's fine. But, you know, when I kind of got the update regarding you, you know, I think it was a month, month or so ago, and I did, I asked that same question. And at the time, I think it was somewhat maybe not, you was interested?
Yeah.
But this, this was my comment. The fact that you've done such a great job for Turner, you're opening the door for another young student to come through.
Yeah.
Because you've made such a great impact on Turner.
And I'm, I'm happy, I'm happy to do that, I'm happy to.
And that's what it's all about.
Yeah.
That's what it's all about. So, you know, I want to applaud you for the work that you've done.
Thank you.
And let me tell you, when I came out of college with an accounting degree, working for a CPA firm, then my first six months was making photocopies. So, let me tell you, you've done, you've done, you've gone, you've gone steps above me just out of being in high school for your first job, okay? So continue to do the great job that you're doing, boss. You know, you've made me very proud of you, and a very good job.
Thank you. Are there any more questions from the board, comments?
I have, I have a comment. Hi.
Hi.
I want you to just take a moment right now and, and, and feel the pride that you should feel for yourself, and that how everyone in this room feels for you right now. Because it is not easy to be a high school student, it is not easy to have a job, and it's definitely not easy to do both at the same time. And I think what is the best out of listening to you just now is that smile that you cannot take off your face. No, no one could take that smile off your face, and I think that's just beautiful. And you are living, you know, just such a great moment of, of what your high school career should feel like. As a, as a young student, you should feel such a lot, so just make sure that you take a moment every now and again to be like, yeah, this is pretty awesome. And I did this, because there are people that helped you, but you are doing the work. So make sure you give yourself a little pat on the back every now and again.
And that, that, that happens more than you think.
Good, good. Well, congratulations to you.
And, and you know, I'll say this without putting any pressure on you, because I don't want you to have any pressure, okay? But I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you what a company told me when I was in college, we didn't spend this much money on you not to get you. Okay, so just saying, if they spent the money, they like you. And that's the good, and that's the good thing, and, and they wouldn't mind having you, and that's the good thing.
It, it goes both ways.
That's right.
It's just been a great experience where I'm at, and I can't, I mean, even if I wasn't, if I'm not there, you know, tomorrow or the next week or whatnot, I know that I've opened up a door for somebody behind me, another junior, sophomore, or another senior, to come in and take my spot and fill it and do everything that needs to be done.
That's it.
Awesome job, wonderful job. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing the two of you here this evening. Really appreciate having you make that presentation. Great job.
Now, I do, and this is from Mr. Gallagher, I do have a few more questions regarding the community benefit agreement, so I can wait till after you give your presentation access.
Yeah, I just want to say, do you have anything else for Jabril?
I know, like, I want to know. I want to know.
You got good stock, you.
Okay.
Tell them I said hi.
Okay.
Oh, see, that's easy, that's okay, that's fine, he could keep that one.
No, I, I'll say, his uncle and I went to school together from the first, from the first grade through high school, all the way through, and he just told me, his uncle said hello to me.
Well, I just want to say that, the highlight of my week last week was meeting Jabril. I met him at his school, and he's such a leader already, and just in the way, walking up and down the halls, the way that he interacted with his peers and the teachers, that's a leader. And we sat down, and I, I had never met him before, I said, are you shy about speaking in public? No, no, no. Do you, do you know that you're gonna be on television? Uh, yeah, you know, the more I told him, the more he liked it, and he was looking forward to it. He couldn't wait to be here, he couldn't wait to be on TV, so that's, that's, that's a great trait for a high schooler to have. And, and then when he said, I thought when you did construction, you just built a building, he said, I didn't realize all the politics you have to deal with, and I said, tell me about it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So anyhow, we bonded on that.
He comes from good stock, I know his family, I didn't know that until now.
But what I want to do is just point out, just very briefly here, I know you have many other things to do here, but I want to point out that, that the construction, as I mentioned, above slab up to the gym is complete and all cleaned up, it's a nice clean, all the other things are falling into place. We do have an RFP out that's in green that was supposed to be out this month to begin to get proposals from construction firms that could assist the district through the end of construction, if the district so chooses, the district and the city so choose to contract that portion out. We're getting good response there, there's already 13 firms that have responded that they would be interested in submitting proposals. And then I'd like to point out on the community meetings here, just to summarize, in just the month of January, in public, we've been able to present the project and its progress twice now, this is the second time this month, yet in front of this board. On January 9th, we were in front of the city schools, giving them an update. January 15th, in front of the Citizens Oversight Committee, gave an update. January 8th, at the City's Commission of Aging, they invited me in, I gave them an update, and an update to this board's Facilities Committee on January the 9th. And you can see the meetings that, month by month, I hope to continue to provide updates, answer questions, and make sure that the public knows the status of the project, what our challenges are, what our successes are, and be available to answer any questions. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address those now.
I had, I just had, I'm just curious in terms of any feedback or any reaction from those living in that area. Have we received any concerns or?
I received one phone call from a woman who lived, who lives across the street in the condo complex across San Pablo.
Oh, okay.
And she had a question as to whether or not construction was allowed to start at 7:00 or 7:30 by city ordinance, and I followed up, and it was 7:00, and they were starting at 7:00. I phoned her back, and she seemed satisfied with that, she had thought it was 7:30, and she also thought that there was, had dust, had migrated across San Pablo and come on their building, and would the builder consider washing down their building, and we're looking into doing that if we can. And aside from that, I, the, there's been no interaction. Turner themselves, the, the project superintendent there every day said there have been interested residents who've walked by and have said nice things about the project, and have been complimentary on how it's organized and how well the dust is being, and the noise is being controlled. So we've had some of that positive feedback, but that's pretty much the extent of it.
Okay, and then, and I'll say as a close by resident, PG&E has been more of an issue for those of us on, yeah, they're, they're, yeah, the streets are in many different situations right now.
While we were working on site, totally unrelated to our project, obviously, they were, and that's what you're talking about, in San Pablo, they were taking out sections of the road and doing some repairs, and they also were along 53rd at a number of spots just in the few weeks that we were on site.
And 54th now, so we're enjoying that routine, not quiet. But, so I guess the other, my other comment was, as it relates to, you said everything to the slab, I mean, it literally is, I mean, it's, you just wouldn't even recognize that there was ever anything there. I mean, it's pretty phenomenal.
I have a side note on that.
Oh, go ahead.
I drive down San Pablo from my house and turn down 47th to go to work, and I drove right past it today, because I usually look for the school on the right side of the construction, and I drove right by it. So I just thought it was kind of funny.
I know, right?
I drove right past, I was like, CVS, oh my God, I.
Like, do you know where you're going, right? Do you know where you're going? But no, it, it has been a remarkable difference for that site to be down, so, I mean, great work. Unfortunately, there's no rain, which allowed things to happen as fast as it was, and hopefully we'll get some benefit out of the lack of rain, unfortunate, I mean, bittersweet, but it's been remarkable in terms of the timing and how things have been pretty well attended to. And I saw the sidewalk was also being freed up and back, which I know was a comment, that was at City School too, so that's great.
Well, the board selected an excellent contractor, Turner, for their ability to execute the project like you've seen, and also their ability to reach into the community as you've seen, so.
That's great.
So we, we should all feel good, and the board should feel very good about that selection.
That's great. Any other board member comments, questions?
A couple of questions, comments, questions. So, Mr. Gallagher, Turner has done a great job thus far, especially in the area with the community benefit agreement, especially in the area of youth engagement with Jabril.
Jabril.
Jabril, I'm sorry. But there are some, there are some other aspects of the community benefit agreement that I would like to get an update on, and one of those would be under the section of the business opportunity. So I would like to get an update, or at least, yeah, an update on during the demolition phase, how has Turner adhered to the benefit opportunities for subcontractors and subconsultants in the impact area and/or the East Bay Corridor, which is defined in the community benefit agreement? So we can, you know, what did that look like in the, for the demolition, part of demolition project? And also, under the workforce development, we're gonna update on what was the good faith process of them recruiting local hires, and what was that percentage for the demolition portion of the project? So we can get those two questions, an update on those two questions at the next meeting, because I, I don't think we can get that tonight.
No, that won't be available, but I can pull that together for next meeting and report it out.
Great, I appreciate it.
Yes.
If I may, along that line, I, I think Jabril has really cast the die as to what excellence looks like in, in the construct, contractor engagement with the school, and, and opening doors and opportunities. Would I like to know as we go forward, and this may be more in the, when we launch into the full contract, but some sense of the sort of overall impact for a broader range of kids, sort of in terms of any, you know, how many kids are being impacted and affected and benefited overall, and how is our education overall being benefited, so that not only will today's kids get benefit, but to the degree that the work that the contractor does also provides teachers with ongoing tools or opportunities? If you could give some sort of report back on those models? I don't know to what degree the teachers are being, have opportunities to, to have access to some of the resources that are available during construction. I know during the bidding process, Turner had a very well-articulated curriculum for working with teachers, and, but I don't know to what degree we're, it's really a match, and obviously, it only works if, if our teachers want it, but I want to make sure that, that that opportunity is opened if, you know, as it was articulated in the bidding process.
Yeah, I understand what you're asking for, and I'll see what I can pull together on that as well.
Terrific, thank you. And, and I just have to say, it's, it really is great to see this model, that it, that it's, as you say, it's more... Terrific. Thank you. And I just have to say, it's, it really is great to see this model, that it, that it's, as you say, it's more than building a building. And it's trying to see how we can take the process of building the building and use it to be a better school. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I'm now going to take this opportunity to open it up to members of the public to address this particular topic, ECCL Update Progress Report. If there's any members of the public that wish to address this particular one. All right, moving on. Thank you so much.
Could we include the Christopher Hall I-1?
This would be for I-1 only. Please, come up.
Somebody grabbed my pen. I left my pen here. Somebody have to have, yeah, that's mine. Thank you.
So, I, I too was impressed with the young man. He's a 12th grader, very articulate, seemed like a very bright young man. But I wanted to let you know something about Turner that perhaps, actually, I should say likely, they haven't talked about. And that was how Turner got the contract to work on the ECCL to begin with. First, we had a plebiscite, a vote among the people of Emeryville about this project. It's called Measure J. And there were a lot of, there was a yes on J, we want to build this project, and a no on J, we didn't want to build it. As you probably are aware, the taxpayers in Emeryville are footing the bill. There's bond financing. The yes-on-J side of the argument was funded by a lot of corporate concerns and two citizens. The single largest contributor to the yes-on-J, Turner Construction. And they donated over $10,000 to Yes On J. This is before they got the job.
No, it's not.
Don't even please let this three minutes go. Please, carry on.
Thank you. Also, the CEO of Turner was donated, I believe it was, I think it was 700, 7,500, I believe, somewhere around there. He personally donated his own money to Yes On J. He doesn't live in Emeryville. After the plebiscite was successful, Turner was in fact granted the contract. It's a no-bid, lease, leaseback contract. And so, it's going to be very lucrative for Turner. Turner's going to make a lot of money on this deal. And I just thought you should know that how, how, how it was passed, and that Turner was the single largest corporate contract, contributor to Yes On J. And it's a company that has no connection to Emeryville. They, I don't believe anybody that works for Turner lives here, but they seem to be very interested in delivering, bringing us a school. And so, I thought it was odd at the time that this construction company that doesn't have any connection wants to help my daughter, but yet now we find that they have gotten the contract. So, when you're talking about politics and project construction, there is that aspect of it as well, you should be cognizant of. I imagine they probably haven't talked about that. But that's something you should be aware of. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comments at this time? All right, great. We look forward to wonderful things from our dear senior and soon be graduating. We'll be watching you. You know I will be watching you.
Watching that smile.
So, we'll be watching you. So, really appreciate and applaud everything. I mean, I think it's incredibly wonderful what Turner has been able to, you know, offer to a budding student who could be going into construction science or something. We'll see. But we look forward to report back. And at this time, we're actually going to move on to, we actually touched I-2. So, do we want to formally do I-2? We've actually done it.
Public comment on I-2?
Yeah, you need to take public.
Oh, so, why, so maybe we'll do I-2.
I don't know. We have to.
Why not, right?
So, maybe we'll just do I-2, and then if there's public comment while we're here. Oh, thank you. Bless you. Please. Thank you so much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As Ms. Turner touched on and read, the ETA sunshine completely, all the way through, they have sunshine their articles for the 13, 14 reopeners. The district staff will be meeting soon to determine which of the articles we will be sunshining, and we hope to sunshine those articles soon as well.
Okay, great. Great. Thank you. And at this time, before you walk away, are there any public comments to I-2 at this time?
Yes.
Please, come on up. Use your three minutes.
Let us know, are you cracking me up? You're cracking me up, Rock.
So, I-2 is what, yes, I believe Ms. Turner was speaking about before, that I wished to comment on. You disallowed it. So, I guess now I'll have to comment on it, even though Ms. Turner is no longer here. So, she spoke, Ms. Turner spoke about essentially the, she wants the teachers, the teachers' union, the ETA, to be valued by this board. And I would like to piggyback onto that. And I think you should start valuing the teachers' association, the teachers' union here. It's clear up till now that hasn't been the case here at Emory. And I believe if, had you been put more stock in valuing the teachers and the teachers' union, we wouldn't be in the predicament that we're in now. And with respect to, she spoke a little bit about pay, salaries. I'd like to remind everybody here that the teachers here at Emory are about the lowest paid in the region, are among the lowest. And I don't think that's right. And I think that with respect to what the superintendent testified in her declaration, if you, I just don't think you guys should be thinking in those terms. I think that we should, I think we should be valuing the teachers, and we should not be making it easier to fire teachers. Instead, we should be empowering teachers, making the profession more desirable for professional teachers. So, that means increasing salary, increasing job security, the opposite of what the superintendent says we need to be doing. And so, I think you should take, should not be listening to the superintendent, and instead you should be listening to the teachers' association.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this particular item? All right. Thank you, and we will be looking for more information. Thank you very much, Ms. Harrell. So, we'll now move on to I-3, Approval of 2012/13 Annual Report on Statutory School Fees, Developer Fees for EUSD. Mr. Bonet.
It's required by government code that developer fee information be received and presented to the board and the public with regard to the collection of developer fees and how they are spent. This report meets that requirement. This report was made available to the, to the public at the end of December, and now it's coming to the board for approval. This is a annual report that the board gets. I will not go through it in detail unless, I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have with regard to, to questions.
Okay. Any board member have questions?
I have a couple of questions. So, Mr. Bonet, I guess the very top, where it says, well, I guess in the summary part of this, amounts to be spent next year. So, I guess my question is, we still have funds available from '05, '06, developer You look at the summary document.
I'm going to.
You got a revenue, you got expenditure, you got a summary. Yeah, the 123688. Uh, that was developer fees, 1112. Okay. All right. You got, okay. I read this wrong, I think, Mr. Bonet. Well, I'll ask, I'll put, I'll ask this question. Do we have any funds that we have not spent in accordance to the regulations as far as having funds still available five to greater than five years out? I mean, because what I'm seeing, what I think I'm seeing on this report, but it says accounting fees for 1112. I see funds still available in '05, '05, '06, all the way through 1112.
So, is what you're seeing is what you're reading?
Right. Do we still have funds available in those years? Because I know what, we have five years to spend, spend these money?
I believe we do, and we'll, we'll be spending them shortly.
But I just want to, I mean, but are we, have we spent all the funds that we have supposed to have spent up until this time and have none more than five years out that have not been spent?
Wow. Remember Glenn's item, I think we might want to, to look at this report again, because it does appear.
Okay. I'm good with that. I just.
Well, and I guess too, the question is, is it planned expenditure too? I mean, that would help me.
The law is quite.
It's the law, right.
I think that if we don't spend funds within five years of receiving them, then we have to give them back to the developers. So, I do think we might want to.
We'll double check on that.
Let's double check, because I'm quite sure from our report from two years ago that we were on track to.
Current.
To not have funds held more than five years. We're only allowed to hold the developers' funds for five years, and they must be spent within the five years. So, I'm, I have a feeling there might be areas that we might want to take a look at.
We'll take a second look at this, yes.
Yeah.
That would be great.
Right.
I have no doubt that we will spend them, but.
Right, right, right.
Right, right, right.
That's not the issue.
It's just the risk of having them still.
So, I just, how it's been accounted for.
And I went back to the financial status report, because we had, I had prepared information with regard to the other funds, including the developer fee, and that would have told me a little bit more what our ending fund balance was, as it currently is, to see how much we have spent up to date. So.
I'm fine with picking this up in a finance committee meeting or something.
Well, if we could just continue this item to the next meeting.
Yeah.
That's fine.
I think that will help.
That's, that's good.
We're under a time constraint, and I do.
That'll help.
Make sure that.
Accurate.
If we could just tie this back to our previous conversations to make sure that they will not hold in developers' fees for any more than five years.
We will do that.
That's good.
At the next meeting.
That's fine.
That's helpful. Okay. So, we'll actually keep that one on for the next board meeting. And we'll now move on to item I-4, Financial Status Report.
So, this is the monthly financial status report. Going to page one, we have received 43% of our budgeted revenues as of the end of December. We have expended 41% of our budgeted expenses. So, we're on track for spending in our revenues throughout the year. I've explained the ending fund balances to you in the past. What I will mention at the end of the report is a cash flow, which we present to the board quarterly because of the deferrals. And at the end of June, we still have a healthy cash balance projected. And with the state paying off those deferrals in the coming year, we will continue to do the cash report. It will, those future cash reports will look much better than what this one does now. But with our ending balance that we had at the end of 1213, we will continue to have a healthy cash balance, unless we spend millions of dollars between now and the end of the year.
We won't do that.
What I will mention again at this time, the State Board of Education approved the Local Control Funding Formula Regulations, and they approved a template for the LCAP recently, after much public comment, almost a full day of public comment. And we're still going through those regulations to see how they fit for, for Emory. Are there any questions the board may have?
And this with on financial status reports, and I guess we'll tap a little bit into the update for LCAP on the next item too.
Right.
Okay. And I believe this is informational only, right? So, are there any more comments on the financial status report?
So, we're reasonably on track in terms of our revenues and expenditures at this point in the year.
Right.
Nothing out of whack. I mean, it's always, it's not exactly the 50% of the budget.
Right.
They come in in different fits and starts, but.
No, but our, our expenses are more regular, and with 85% of our budget in personnel, the outflows are pretty consistent month to month, with the exception of the computer purchases, you know, supplies, our utilities are coming in regularly. We have no large outstanding contracts that we've been paying on yet. So, we're, we're within our budget, and we're, we're on course to, to meet what we have budgeted. We will be making budget adjustments again at second interim. So, we're on line with, with our spending plan.
Okay. The, have you been able to figure out, well, first of all, has the state figured out what exactly they're going to portion to Emory Unified for the current fiscal year?
We've come up with the projections based on the, the Basie's LCFF Funding Formula. I'm still trying to get a handle on some of, I'm trying to get a handle on what we received last year and compare that to what we received this year in our revenue limit amounts with the LCFF amounts and those categorical programs that were lumped into LCFF. My difficulty is, last year, we had the basic aid bump, and it's, it's causing me a little more work. And I'm going back actually to the prior year, because it hadn't changed much with regard to revenue limit and the categoricals that were lumped into LCFF. Basically, it was supposed to be straight line across, because there was no increase in dollars. So, I'll be comparing the 1112 revenue categorical monies to the LCFF to see what our actual increase is moving into LCFF with the 1.56% COLA thrown in that LCFF amount. Now, I had said earlier that the state is looking at a more than 10% increase going into 1415, but the statutory COLA going into 1415 is .86. So, a whole another 9% is being thrown on top of the funding formula as we move into 1415 because of the tax collections that the state has received. And the governor's being very conservative with. And the governor is being very conservative with those dollars and wanting to pay off debt and to create a reserve at the state level because a lot of those dollars that came in were from capital gains. And he is not wanting to repeat the mistakes of the past where we take those one-time capital gains dollars and put them into programs that continue the need for funding. So I applaud him for that. But I'm still trying to find that comparison between 1112 and the current year. And it's just the, last year's basic aid amount is, just made it a little difficult for me to make the year-to-year comparison.
Right. And have you figured out the necessary small schools treatment for us going forward? I think we determined that it's, sort of fixes it at where we were at, but doesn't increase it?
Well, the new information that I'm getting, that continues to be funded. I still need some clarification if it's still going to be funded at the current level or if it's going to be funded at the old funding formula level. It seemed to me, from what I've read, is that it's going to continue to be funded as it had in the past, that it's not going to be frozen with a base year of 201213.
Yeah, okay. I thought for us, it was going to be frozen.
I, that was my first understanding, too, but I think as some lobbying went on at the state that that may have changed.
All right. Well, the other, I guess, important news that we heard out of Sacramento is they are planning a technical fix to the few districts that, like us, fall into the basic aid one year bump that threw off our formula. Now, we haven't seen that language yet, but the Department of Finance is reporting they're coming out in a technical cleanup bill in early February to address the districts that became basic aid only because of this redevelopment agency settlement for 1213.
And that will affect us to the tune of about 8% on our categorical programs.
Meaning, meaning we will get the equivalent of 8% more dollars of our categorical pie?
Right. Which is a smaller piece of that whole funding formula.
Mm-hmm. Got it. On the deferrals issue, I know that a discussion that's going on in Sacramento is around whether it's wise to pay off all the deferrals in one fell swoop, which the governor is proposing to do, or to lay that out over a few years and save some of that money this year for program money. Do you have an opinion on that? How, what's best for our district?
We had a discussion about that as a small CBO roundtable group after the governor's budget presentation. My personal feeling is that you never know what the state's going to do year to year or what the economy is going to do year to year. My personal feeling would be to get paid for some of our wall of debt, I mean, education-wise, which would be to pay off some of the mandated costs that's been backlogged so we have our cash now.
But that's not part of the deferrals issue, right? I mean, the mandated costs...
But it's a one-time payment. So that'd be a one-time amount that would be going towards the deferrals. What I'm saying is that should go towards paying off some of that mandated cost debt.
That would be your preference.
That would be my preference.
Yeah. But between deferrals all paid off this year or this coming year, or only partially paid off and more for program, do you have a...
I would rather see the cash in the district's pocket with the payment for mandated costs. And we can use those dollars because they're unrestricted for Common Core implementation, for additional courses of study for students with regard to technology if the smarter balance is an issue, making sure...
So you're saying pay off the wall of debt, but categorize it as paying off the mandated costs that's owed to us?
Or a portion of the mandated costs and not pay the entire amount to the deferrals, pay off a large portion of the deferrals, but save some of that for mandated costs that would give districts the flexibility to use those dollars in some one-time fashion.
Do you know what the total Emory Unified deferral debt is that the state owes us?
Not off the top of my head.
I mean, do you have a...
I do have a calculation on my cash flow...
A couple hundred thousand or...
That takes out the, takes out the deferral.
You're talking, you know, a million?
No, it's like maybe 300,000 if I...
Okay.
I'm just vaguely remembering that off of my...
I'm not going to hold it to you. I'm just curious what the order of magnitude is. So if it's 300,000 or 500,000 and the state pays that all off, is that not, isn't that cash for us to, I mean, we've already paid for that program...
That's cash.
...out of our reserve in essence.
That's cash. That's correct.
So if they give us 300,000, they're kind of, they owe us that. It's an IOU, isn't it? And so...
It is an IOU. The mandated cost dollars are IOU also.
Right.
The paying off the deferrals just gives us cash, doesn't increase our budget. A payment for mandated costs puts additional dollars, cash dollars in our pocket, but also pays, increases our budget for additional expenditures.
So we might have the opportunity to add some of the programs, not the...
I would not use that mandated cost money for ongoing programs. It'd be for one-time, one-time expenditure because it'd be a one-time payment from the state.
I guess I'm, maybe we could take it offline, but we've already also spent, for the mandated cost, whatever it was, the hours it took for us to fill out reports or SARCs or whatever that the mandated costs would be covering, we paid for those hours, the states saying, here's our IOU on that. How is that different than the deferral? And it seems like we're, in both cases, getting back money that we already spent.
We budget deferral dollars. We do not budget mandated cost dollars. So we make a projection what the LCFF dollars are going to be, say it's $5 million. The state pays us 4.7 million. They pay us the $300,000 in the following fiscal year, but we've budgeted that full $5 million. The mandated costs, we don't budget at all. We don't know when we're going to get it. We don't know if we're going to get it. If the state pays us...
The mandated cost seems like new money to us in a way that deferral doesn't.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's a one-time shot in the arm.
I guess it's just how we carry that 300,000 on your deferral example. Do we, we just carry it forward as state owes us this?
As a receivable, yes.
We're not actually taking money out of our reserve to fill that $300,000 hole?
That's right. Because we budget the income at 100%.
I see.
And we expend, we make expenses based on that 100%, but we receive part of that in the following year, but we book it as a receivable as we would have received it.
Okay. All right. So it kind of squares up reality with the state's fiction.
[laughing]
Finally.
Right.
But it doesn't, it doesn't actually make us feel any richer the way that...
That's correct.
All right. Appreciate that.
Helpful class on that. Please quit.
So Mr. Bonet, do we know when we will get the analysis of the LCCF and how much dollars we will be receiving? Do we know when we'll get that update or that...
I'm currently working on that, and I hope to complete that by the end of next week.
So that means we'll have it at the next board meeting?
I will try to do that, yes.
Okay. Because I think, well...
Well, we can actually move on to I five. Any other questions, though, on I four? Any public comments on I four, financial status report? So we can move on to update on the Local Control Accountability Plan, which would, I'm certain, capture LCFF, what you just mentioned in terms of the estimates or...
Basically, the update for the LCAP, I will address the engagement process of the LCAP. So I don't know if there needs to be further discussion on, in terms of funding, and that will be addressed by Mr. Bonet. So thus far, in terms of the engagement process, this, this past week, we actually have, the goal is to actually do more of like, not necessarily brainstorming, but just getting, addressing the needs that are out there from our staff stakeholders. So last week, I met with the Antioch School Site Council, the ESSPTO, and the D-LAC committees. And so all three of those, those committees, I explained information or gave brief information about LCFF and then explained what the LCAP process is and what their role in the LCAP process would be. The ESS School Site Council met, and then this week, the Budget Advisory Committee will meet. In the terms of the School Site Council, we know we need to recruit two more teachers at Antioch, and at ESS School Site Council, we need to recruit two more parents. So we will have a full committee. We're also recruiting for the parent, the district parent advisory committee, and so far, our goal is 10. We have about four parents who have stated some commitment to that. So basically, we need to really call parents and explain to them what the commitment is and what the role is. And there are a few parents from the D-LAC committee that will actually join as well the district parent advisory committee. In terms of our staff, currently, the staff is engaged or all of, both staffs have, for those who want to participate, but they've been presented a Common Core questionnaire. And so the questionnaire has been returned. There are teachers who want to be a part of the Common Core planning, and so currently, we're, there are about nine teachers who were part of that. And so we are planning a session, so we will have at least that part of the plan to, the two-year plan, to the, to the board on February 12th, first reading, and then second reading February 26th. In terms of the first round brainstorming at the staff meetings, the upcoming staff meetings will do that for the LCAP, but I'm also encouraging staff to really be a part of their school site councils and the Budget Advisory Committee so they can kind of understand the bigger picture when it comes to engaging with parents and with students. The student forums, we have scheduled for January 30th and 31st for our ninth graders, February 3rd and 4th for our 10th graders, February 27th and 28th for our 11th graders. And for our seniors, they will engage in lunchtime forums because most of our seniors will, since they're leaving, and a lot of them are suffering from senioritis. So our goal for the seniors is just to make sure that they complete their classes, submit their college applications. So we're really focusing on the ninth through 11th graders. And then at the student body meetings, the middle school students will participate and receive information from some of the younger students at Antioch and also the ASB at ESS. In terms of our community forums, we have it tentatively scheduled at ESS for February 8th, but we've confirmed February 11th at Antioch and then March 1st at the district office. And so the first round, again, is basically a list, just to listen and to hear parents and staff and students talk about what they want to see or how they want to enhance programs or new programs. The second round will, we will help the committees or the groups think about how do you categorize these in terms of the state priorities? And then the third round will actually be a synthesis session to prioritize the state priorities and looking at the district priorities. So hopefully, also with that third round, we will have to present the plan to our bargaining units so they can actually have input. But at that time, hopefully, the groups, Budget Advisory Committee, the bargaining units, the district parent advisory, and the, and some of our committees where we have our instructional leadership, whether it's staff or administrative, will begin to help synthesize the information. So far, even with three groups, there are many ideas. And so some of the concerns that have come up is how much are we receiving so they can actually be very thoughtful. Another one is they want to know how will this information be received? Well, there was a question that came up, we're not sure if the, how does the board hear us and how is that reflected, and when do we know it's been taken up? So I've tried to do some education on that in terms of the difference between when they come and speak during public comment versus when there's an item on the, on the agenda that they can actually have a discussion. So those questions came up. We're still working with translation and to make sure that we have translation for some of our Spanish-speaking parents as well as our Punjabi-speaking parents so they can actually be involved. And so the other focus groups that we'll have are some focus groups that are specifically just for Spanish-speaking parents at the Family Resource Center and for some of our Punjabi-speaking parents just at the Family Resource Center. Because sometimes it's a little challenging to translate a large group and to actually get their, you know, so they are, so they can get their answers, I mean, their questions answered. So a lot of them will have questions, and they want to be very thoughtful about how they give input and engage. And so that was one of the requests that they've made, and so we want to accommodate that. And I mean, so basically, that's where we are in terms of the engagement process. Our goal is to, my goal is to, I'll send out, at least for the first three forums, send out the feedback so other committees can see what parents have been saying or staff has said, so it won't seem so isolated when they actually give feedback, but they know what other constituent groups or stakeholder groups have stated. And then, and then the next goal, I'm meeting with, so that's from youth leadership, who will help organize some of the community forums, and how do we actually display the information so parents know that they've been heard, you know, and post it in a way that they can see it. So communication was another one that came up, and we're trying to figure out what's the best way that they can receive it quickly versus just trying to find it on the website, which some of them still find challenging to navigate.
So that was a lot of information. Let me make sure I heard it properly. You laid out dates. Those are the dates for the first round? Is that what you're called the first round?
Yes.
And you anticipate doing three rounds?
Yes, at least the second round. So with all...
You don't have, you don't have second or third round dates yet. You just have the first round dates?
No, I have basically most of the dates. So with, so they'll look a little different. So with the school site councils and the, and mainly it's with the groups who are synthesizing the information, so the school site councils, the district English Language Advisory Council, some of our staff meetings, then I'll have an opportunity to meet some of those groups at least three times before we have to present the LCAP as well as the Budget Advisory Committee, et cetera. So we'll have an opportunity to meet at least some of those groups three times.
So, but the students and the community forums, that's just one round?
Yeah. The community forums are, are forums that will, the first two are to be more of, we want to build on each one. So the first one is more get the ideas out. The second community forum is to help categorize them, and then the third one is to more bring it together so they can actually synthesize the information that's been presented.
So you also have three rounds, as it were, with the community forum?
Yes.
Which will be parents, your teachers invited to that, too?
Anyone. Parents, teachers, students, community members.
And are you, are you, are you meeting with the staff at their staff meetings?
Yes. And, and some of them who are part of like the RTI Collaborative or their instructional leadership teams, or some of them who are on the behavior support team or et cetera. So any, anytime that I can sit with staff, then it's an opportunity to talk about... So any, anytime that I can sit with staff, then it's an opportunity to talk about LCCF or LCAP and receive some information from them.
Right. Yeah, so it's, it would be good if you could provide the board with a list of all these dates and rounds, so A, we can keep them straight in our head, B, so we can participate and show up as well. And I guess the, you answered one of my questions, sounds like you're, you're using youth together to help with the community forums?
Yes.
Also the student forums?
Yes.
Also the student forums, okay. The, I, I think it would be a good idea to have somewhere in there, maybe it's the end of February, early March, a board study session where some of this preliminary information comes in, and we talk about it with the board and the public, whoever wants to come. And, and, you know, we're not deciding or setting the LCAP, but we're, you know, providing preliminary comments, thoughts, suggestions, making sure whatever, you know, the board priorities or the district priorities are incorporated into the, because we do get to establish, if we want, local priorities. Bless you. In addition to the eight state priorities, we can add one or any number of local priorities.
So what I've been using, or I've informed the committees, is that the local priorities are the three priorities that you all adopted in the fall. So those are the three that I've used, the state priorities, and then I've talked about the district priorities, which are the three that you all adopted in the fall, to help kind of guide them and think about, and to kind of, and to contain some of the ideas that they have. So there are plenty of them. I mean, they're, they're, this is just with three groups, so I haven't even really touched the students and the staff yet. And there, it allowed them to sort of have a container. So then, so the next round will be, how do we categorize those? And then the next one is to synthesize. So hopefully, we'll know how much we're receiving, so then it's, it'll, it will help parents and staff to kind of think about what those priorities are, even in those state priorities or the district priorities, what those high-level activities would be, or strategies would be in order to achieve the outcome or the goal.
Like a preview, preview study session.
Right.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, just so they're, you know, I think, I think, I guess it, it, yeah, it doesn't... Yeah, I don't think we want to wait to the very end to, for the board to see the product of all this work. I think you want to include the board in the, to know what's coming in, what are people thinking. Maybe it'll change our three things that we decided in August. Maybe we'll say, you know what, computer literacy is the number one thing we ought to be thinking about with the smarter balance coming on board. I don't want to prejudge anything, but I'm...
No, so you, so...
So does that make sense, we could fit that in?
That makes sense. I mean, so hopefully, the goal will be is to actually continuously send out the feedback, so you always see it. So you can see how it adds on and adds on, who repeats the same information, where some of the high priorities are, at least in terms of some of the initial thoughts. And then, so you'll have that information with you. So it is, so again, it's just thinking about, how can we actually also make it visible, so people can see what is happening throughout the, in each one of these committees or forums?
Need a website, a page.
Yeah. Is there, have you thought about that? Having a page where you can post all this stuff and people can see what's...
I have, so I have to find out what's the best one that I can actually... So I've learned, you know, about blogging, see if a blog page would be easier than Tumblr. But I know it has to be something that has to be attached, and it's easy for me to upload and to type into it in terms of just getting information out quickly. So I have, so there have been a few parents who have talked to me about some forums versus just, so it's a little bit more engaging versus just posting pieces of paper, and here's the click, and here's the sheet of paper that, you know, you receive. So we did, we've talked about push and pull, like making sure that it's easy for them to locate the information, as well as making it easy to push out the information.
Okay, good idea. But kind of simple expectations by having a kind of a preview at some point. And it may just be referencing pieces that come, so...
Yeah, so it won't be, I mean, in terms of the information that you all receive, just understand it won't, it won't be in a pretty package. It'll just be a list.
Well, you know, I concur with Member Adfield, to the extent, whereas if you could distribute out the schedule of the, especially the community meetings, it seems like you're doing, you're kind of tackling staff during work hours, and that may be a little difficult for some of us to attend. But I mean, I would even still probably at least give us those dates as well.
So I can give you all that. So the dates that, that I think, my last board meeting, but the meeting before, the document that I gave, those are the dates. The only date that changed, the only date that'll change will be that first community forum, only because the goal was to have it at the Emory Secondary School PTO meeting. But because there's our, the third Wednesday of the month, we're on vacation.
Okay, well, if you could just, you know, just send it out. And then my question, when is the BAC meeting?
The, one is this Thursday.
This Thursday? And that's a public meeting as well?
It is.
And what time is it?
5:30.
And where at?
Here, in the, in the conference room.
Any other questions?
Yeah, do, yeah, I guess, when do you anticipate having the recommended panelists of the parent advisory panel?
The goal is to have that by the end of this month, so they can really start to... And I think it'll be helpful for them to actually see what some of the feedback is and, and kind of do a hands-on engagement process. So the goal is to have them by the end of this month, so they can start in February, and actually maybe participate in some of the community forums.
All right. Well, can you, I guess, keep us updated on who you're recommending to be on that panel?
Yes.
And its composition?
Some of them are hesitant, hesitant yet. They're, they're still feeling their way around, so we want to make sure that they will be committed to, committed and then, and also agree to dates that they feel are, will benefit the group. So we've, so I've asked, would Saturdays work for them? Can they come in on evenings? A lot of them do work. And so I'm really, I'm definitely looking for parents who can meet on a Saturday as well as an evening, so it gives us more flexibility.
Very helpful. Any other questions for Ms. Allen on this one?
I have some questions for Mr. Bonet on this one.
Mr. Bonet on the other piece of it.
Yeah, so...
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Allen. It sounds like an ambitious outreach agenda. And, yeah, to the extent you can think about streamlining it, I mean, or just, you know, if you have community forums that can do, well, I don't know. It sounds like you're, if you're doing teacher-staff, for example, and you should be able to get the people who are on the RTI instructional team input at the teacher-staff meeting, so you don't have to do two meetings. But I, I like, I like your outline. I just would appreciate seeing it lined up. Yeah, in terms of the, I guess, the, you know, the dollar amount of what we're going to get for 1415, as Ms. Allen says, that's when people want to know, how much money do we have, and to allocate when? And it's going to be a moving target, as it is every year, right? So pretty much till the budget's adopted. But when, when do you think we can at least get sort of preliminary numbers on 1415 and what that, you know, budget increase means for us?
Preliminary numbers are out now. They will be revised at the May revise, so there's still some talk with regard to exactly what we talked about earlier, whether to pay off the entire deferral or a major portion of it, and then put the other to whatever interest groups are, are hitting the governor up for, you know, I want to pay for this, let's move dollars here. So all of that's now occurring. But like, again, we have preliminary numbers now, they'll change at May revise, we know that. And as you know, I follow this process between now and when we adopt our budget. So I'll be staying on top of information that comes out of Sacramento with regard to where things may end up in May as we go through this process. But right now, I have to go with the information that the governor presented last week, so...
So do we have a template set up?
Not yet, I...
I mean, at least, I mean, I understand the numbering, and that may change, but the template, we can at least have a template and put in the numbers that we had, and then adjust as...
Well, I have last year's template, and I attempted to put some of these numbers in and found there's a flaw in the, in the, in one of the calculations. And so I need to find out how to resolve that.
In, in the BASS calculator?
That's correct.
Okay.
Because it, currently, the necessary small schools...
It's always...
It drops down for 1213, but it doesn't drop down correctly in 1415 and 1516. So I need to find out or talk to somebody who can fix that problem. Or to talk to a colleague to find out if they have the same, the same issue that I'm having. But...
You can always call Berkeley. I mean, just let me know.
So I, again, I attempted to drop numbers from this year's LCCF BASS calculator and update them with some of the governor's budget numbers. But I'm not quite sure what to do and how to make the increase for that 10.9%. Because there's a COLA amount, and I just have to figure out how that information that the governor presented goes into the new BASS calculator.
They didn't give us an Emory Unified projected amount.
We have an Emory projected amount for the current year.
Yeah, I mean, for 1415.
That's correct.
From Finance, we don't have that. You're just trying to figure out what it'll be fixed on.
How to move the generic information that we got into Emory's unique formula.
Yeah, with, with necessary small schools, and then how does the, does the, the basic aid year, and that fix, doesn't that, isn't that going to affect what we get in 1415?
Right.
Are we, are we conversating with anybody in Sacramento regarding this?
No, because this information just came out.
Right.
So everybody's doing this right now, as, as I am.
Right.
So...
Okay, so it seems like...
Work through, through it, and I need to work through it quickly.
Yeah.
And I need to do that because we are sitting at the table talking, and the bargaining units also want this information.
All right. Well, I'm going to try and have a conversation at least, you know, with someone in Finance on the, the technical fix around the basic aid, RDA issue. And, you know, I'll pull you into that if, if, if need be, if it gets technical. But at a minimum, I'll convey to you what, what I learned and how they're going to fix it. But supposedly, I mean, they would say treat, look at 1112 or something, right?
Right. And, and that's what I'm going to do, is just use those 1112 numbers.
Look at 1213 as if they didn't have the settlement.
Right.
Right. I think that would be the, the technical fix, and so you just need to know what the rule is.
That's correct.
And then you can apply it, okay.
Because I have, I have the undebitited numbers for categoricals.
Okay. So, but I guess my, my initial question was, you know, when can you provide to the board and Ms. Allen, do you think reasonably our 1415 projected budget that the LCAP's supposed to be built around? Is that going to be mid-February or so?
It's going to be as soon as I can get a fix on that BASS calculator.
So fast, you can talk to somebody in Sacramento faster.
No, I'm not saying that.
I'm not figuring out the necessary small schools calculator error, but maybe we can add that to the conversation if...
Because I, I...
Probably someone else.
I plugged in the .86 COLA, and I'm just not quite sure how that other, the other increase fits into the, how that fits into the formula. And I don't know if to wait for BASS to redo the calculations and then give us a template so we can input our unique information, but I'm going to be finding that out soon.
Okay.
So I didn't, I, as I was working through the calculator, I thought, I, I don't have enough information to complete this, so my next step is the County Office of Ed.
All right. So you're correct that, that the emergency regulations have been adopted, so we now know what the LCCF expenditure rules are for this year, and how we need to figure out our increasing, you know, what, what are our supplemental concentration funds, and how do we increase or improve services? What kind of showing do we need to make in the LCAP tied to that dollar amount? And...
As I understand it, it's tied to the EIA funding that we had previously, and it gets increased as a percentage based on our supplemental concentration grant numbers.
The, there's some discretion for the district there. We have to establish a baseline from last year of what we were spending on our unduplicated students. And the baseline at a minimum for 13, for the current fiscal year, not last year, but the current fiscal year, 1314, at a minimum, it's what we got, EIA 1213.
Right.
But we have, it's sort of a pick-your-poison. You can have a low baseline. Ultimately, we're going to get to the target in eight years out at full funding. Hopefully, it comes in eight years. But we should know what the supplemental concentration dollar amount is at full funding and the ratio of supplemental concentration to base at full funding. That will be a dollar amount. Now, we're going to step up from last year to that dollar amount in supplemental concentration, and we can, our base, starting point at least, has to be EIA. But if we want to say, you know what, we don't, we want to close that, we don't want such a steep curve or jump to that final supplemental concentration target, we, we want to recognize that last year, we were doing more than just EIA dollars for unduplicated kids, because maybe we, in some of our services, we're targeting low-income students or English learners above and beyond EIA. We get to count that. That's going to be your job to figure out what, what else can we take credit for on top of EIA? What services were we providing that were for unduplicated pupils, actually this current year? And that can be our base. So we're starting from a higher base, we have a, less of a slope to get to over the next eight years, if that makes sense. So, so we did build some discretion into it at a minimum at EIA. But there is a, a set formula, that's one of the only discretionary points we have, is what's in our baseline. But then beyond that, it, it's quite fixed in terms of what our ultimate target is, what supplemental concentration is this year, how much of a step, you know, the governor's taking 28% of a, of a further step on top of last year's 12% step. So at the end of these first two years, we should be 40% of the way toward full LCCF funding. And our supplemental concentration overall grant should be 40% of the way toward that ultimate supplemental concentration target. And that's the pot, that 40% of that target. That's what we need to articulate in our LCAP, we are spending to increase or improve services for unduplicated pupils.
And it's my understanding we can do that on a district-wide basis, since we're at 74%?
We, we have a, yes, we're above the 55% threshold, so you could do it if you were above or below the threshold. You just, the justification is different if you're a concentrated district like we are, above 55, versus what you have to justify to do... are, above 55 versus what you have to justify to do a district-wide program below 55. Below 55, you have to show your program is the most effective use of those dollars to do it district-wide. Over and above a more targeted program. Above the threshold where we are, a lot more flexibility, we, we have to show that it is serving the, the goals that we have set in the LCAP for our high-needs unduplicated pupils. So that, you know, one, one of the things that will be on the table is, in, in the future, is whether or not that should be a little tighter. But for this year, we have a lot of flexibility in, in how to spend that, those dollars. But we should have some articulation, what we're doing with that supplemental concentration.
For those students, right.
Yeah. Why that's, you know, uniquely or principally or, you know, primarily directed to benefit unduplicated pupils in a way that our general base dollars are more about helping the overall But in any event, in terms of the formula, I had a significant role in, in writing the, the actual formula, that, to figure out what our supplemental concentration target is. So happy to work with you on that.
That'd be great.
Right. We have the, well, oh, you're King of LCFF.
Don't call me.
The prince. Oh, my gosh. Does an Emory bill?
Well, I, I will tell you, I probably have it in my backpack here. There were over 500 people who came to testify. Not everyone spoke, 330 spoke. Many people, including me, had five or 10 people behind them when they were speaking. So there were, there were over 500 people, but the, the number one person in the room was yours truly--
Right.
At 5:15 in the morning.
Wow.
So I got the number one badge.
There you go.
Wow.
There you go.
It's going to be framed.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh.
Were you able to see the governor, because the governor came also, didn't he?
Governor came.
Did you get a chance to talk to the speaker?
No, just, just gave him, you know--
See my badge.
Gave him a thumbs up.
There you go. Okay, there you go.
No, it was, it was an impressive turnout of both students and district personnel. CSBA actually did a good job of turning out their folks and, and districts came and talked about, you know, what they were doing with their money and how they were trying to engage the community. So it was, it was a very interesting day.
Your war report.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Josh. Well, we are concluding, I guess, with item five. Are there any questions, comments? Any public comments on this particular item? All right, so we'll move on to item J. Any board reports announced this evening?
I think Member Adfield just gave his.
I did.
All right. All right, and we now have item K, calendar review. I can run through it real quick, I have no problem with that. We have a regular, our next regular board meeting is on February 12, 2014 here in the district office location. We have superintendent's committees, no curriculum committee for the month of February. We have facilities committee, February 5th, and a communications committee meeting, February 12, at 5 o'clock. We have city school committee meeting on February 6th, which will also be here located at the district office location. And at this time, we're going to go into item L, closed session. I don't know, are you, I don't expect us to be in there very long, so we could come back and report out. But we'll also make sure we report out at the following regular board meeting as well, so I'm hoping.
I'm going to let people go home.
Yeah, I mean, I think in order to, for you all to get home, we can, we'll convene, excuse me, we'll adjourn out of closed session and report out at the next board meeting, I think is definitely fine. So, meeting adjourned?